In the amount of four hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and five cents, for a total of one million, eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right, any questions on the bills?
I have none.
None.
And I have none. All those in favor of the approval of claims say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Is there any other business for us, Mr. Weaver?
I don't know. It seems like we should have something. I mean, what do you want to talk about?
Well, I've already posted the question. Who do we call for that?
Yeah, I think we'd call the county.
Okay, I'll do that.
Yeah, call the county to find out why certain properties are exempt from...
Property taxes.
Property taxes and others are not. Actually, I think churches are exempt. I think there's some strict guidelines of those, but I don't know why a utility company would be exempt. That doesn't make any sense. So we'll find out, or you can find out, or...
I'll try and find out myself, because I'm curious, because, you know, they're cheating us out of taxes.
Yeah.
And we're one place that needs the money.
Thanks for looking out for us.
All right, if there's no other business, meeting adjourned.
Would the acting city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Rich Guard.
Here.
Councilwoman Mary Ellen Christensen.
Present.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Todd Smith.
Here.
Mayor Ron Warbness.
I'm present. Thank you. I declare that we have a quorum this evening, and we have a full council, so we don't need to excuse anyone. The chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Your Honor, I would move to approve the agenda with the addition of item number fifteen, which is the, um, the personal use airport hangar lease agreement change we received.
Second.
So that would go after, after fourteen, so number fifteen. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, communication from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Is there anyone that would like to address the council at this time? Okay, doesn't appear to be. Agenda item number eight. Oh, yes, okay. Agenda item number seven, city staff response to previous citizens' comments, if any. Does the staff have any comments?
I'm not aware of any, Your Honor.
Okay. Okay, and the consent agenda, would the acting city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes September sixteenth, two thousand and fourteenth, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes October sixth, two thousand and fourteen, finance committee meeting. Approval of the finance committee recommendations, October sixth, two thousand and fourteen. Approval of the municipal court report for the month of August, two thousand and fourteen. Approval of the municipal court report for the month of September, two thousand and fourteen. Approval of the delinquent fines of deceased defendants, September, two thousand and fourteen. And the city clerk's office received three catering permits. The first one for Bar Ten, October eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Hats off for Hope at the Riverton Armory, four P M. to twelve A M. The second for La Pierre for November first, two thousand and fourteen. Pheasants Forever Beengue at the Fremont Center, four P M. to twelve A M. And the third was from La Pierre for November eighth, two thousand and fourteen. The Gold Buckle Ball at Fremont Center, four P M. to twelve A M.
Your Honor?
Okay, yes.
It's the recommendation of the finance committee for the approval of claims to be paid in the amount of six hundred and sixty-four thousand, seventy-one dollars and sixty cents. Checks written for payroll liabilities for September nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen, in the amount of two, or four hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and five cents, for a total of one million, eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Second. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. Agenda item number nine, public hearing in consideration of daycare license application for Courtney Casper, Building Blocks Home Childcare. Community Development Director's report, please.
Yes, Your Honor. In accordance with our Riverton Municipal Code, we have to conduct a public, uh, public hearing. We have received an application that has been completed with the fee paid, and we have also advertised a notice of public hearing for a new family childcare home. The application is for a family childcare home which has no more than ten children, including the applicant's children. Eighteen notifications were sent or delivered to surrounding property owners regarding the proposed daycare facility located at one zero nine East Adams Avenue. Only one property owner has disapproved of the new facility with concerns of more noise in the neighborhood and not wanting commercial venues within the neighborhood. Pursuant to the Riverton Municipal Council, there are some alter, alternatives that council can look at. You may authorize the application based upon special provisions placed thereon. You can authorize a temporary permit pending issuance of a certificate, deny the application, or approve the application by three fourths of all members of the governing body if there are protests against the issuance of the permit signed by owners of twenty percent or more of lots within a distance of one hundred and forty feet. Twenty percent would, of the eighteen permits, would be three point six owners. The budget impact is sixty-five dollars, uh, given to the city in revenue less the publication cost. Staff would recommend that council approve the new daycare license submitted by Courtney Casper for a family childcare home.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion for the public hearing?
Motion to open public hearing?
Second.
It's been moved in second to open a public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. I now declare the public hearing is open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this issue at this time? We've got a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay. Chair would entertain a motion for the daycare license application?
Your Honor, I'd move to approve the, uh, new daycare license of Courtney Casper.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve the daycare application. Is there discussion? Boy, this is easier than the last one we did, I'll tell you.
Uh, Your Honor?
Yes.
Is Greg or Donna Ward here? They were the only ones that were protesting.
That was my understanding, and I don't know if they're in the audience or not, but...
They're here now.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second regarding this issue. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, agenda item number ten is miscellaneous concrete repair change order. Public Works Director report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. May I ask a little latitude before doing that report as well? I would like to highlight, um, some of the progress that has been made, because I think as a community, we're truly blessed to have this one percent fund. I know myself and my department really appreciate the citizens and the community who passed that. And I want to focus on some of the positive gains that we've had this summer because of that one percent fund. And I will do so quickly, just because I know we do have a full plate tonight. Let me get this squared away. So again, this is to highlight the two thousand and fourteenth miscellaneous concrete project, and since we are addressing a change order, I think it's appropriate to highlight some of the progress and a lot of the work that we did this summer. We have, um, in our audience representatives from both the contractor and the subcontractor, Majors Equipment and E R I Engineering. And I commend both of their organizations for the work they did this summer. There was a lot of, uh, work completed in many areas of our community, north, south, east, and west of Federal Boulevard, and I think our taxpayers received a great benefit from this project. All that said, I think it's kind of cool to show some of the work that they have done. And again, I'll do so quickly, but they've varied from residential areas, as you see, where they've worked on approaches, curb and gutter, asphalt patches. Same thing here. There's a lot of technical work here involved in tying in those roof drains and tying in existing concrete. And I want to highlight the, the great technical work and proper job that has been completed for our residents. One of the things with our community is, uh, we have aging infrastructure, and as such, um, some of our ramps are not ADA compliant with federal law. And part of this project is to help our community become more walkable. Sometimes doing so is a little bit technical and complicated, because you're dealing with existing infrastructure, existing grades. And ADA is fairly restrictive, and it should be, to assist those members of our community who, um, have any type of disability with movement and, uh, receive the same benefit as all of us receive in getting around our community. Great work on cross gutters, help our cities, or, excuse me, our city roads drain better. Again, uh, this is on Broadway, I believe, where a lot of drainage issues and concrete issues with infrastructure were repaired. We did a lot of ADA ramps through this project, and I think it's a great benefit to our community. And when we do those, a lot of times you have to do the transition, the transition structure for drainage, um, and also the waterways as well. Another highlight of some of those ADA ramps. This didn't turn out so well overhead, but, um, this is showing the scope of some of the work that they did, where a lot of the road, um, was worked on the edges of the roads for drainage, curb and gutter, and also access, accessibility per ADA law. And then you gotta tip your hats to the guys that are doing the work, um, out there every day. And so just wanted to end with that slide and, again, appreciate our community, appreciate the contractors who worked on this job, and for the benefit that we received from such a positive project. Thank you for that latitude, and I will now go ahead and read the report. Through the recommendation of the Fix Our Roads Citizen Committee, um, hereafter, I'll reference that as force, the city council approved a citywide concrete repair project intended to upgrade degrading sections of curb and gutter, sidewalk, cross gutters, and ADA access ramps. In order to complete this work, a request for qualification was advertised for an engineering firm to design and prepare project documents for a miscellaneous concrete repair project. Furthermore, to, hereafter, excuse me, to be referred to as project. In Burke Miller, I M E, was selected as the firm to prepare plans, project documents, and serve as the project engineer for the above listed work. I M E designed the project at a ninety calendar, at ninety calendar days for substantial completion and one hundred calendar days for final completion. The project was advertised for bid on February twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen, and March second, two thousand and fourteen. Bids were received and opened on March tenth, two thousand and fourteen. A total of four bids were received and publicly opened. Majors Equipment Incorporated was selected as the responsive low bidder at nine hundred and forty-four thousand and eighty-three dollars. Upon city council approval, Majors Equipment Incorporated was awarded the project on March nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen. The notice to proceed was given May fifth, two thousand and fourteen. As a ninety calendar day project, the expected time, excuse me, date of completion, of substantial completion was August third, two thousand and fourteen. At the time of expected substantial completion, I M E estimated that approximately twenty-five percent of the project had been completed. To this date, and I will make a change here in my many drafts, I failed to change this. The project is over fifty percent complete, and that's relating to total funds originally budgeted and awarded to completed funds. If we look towards geographic locations that have been completed, I think it's safe to say that more than fifty percent of the work was completed. Article twelve, three A of the contract general provisions addresses time delays beyond the control of the contractor. Due to some city-directed delays and atypical seasonal weather, additional days could be added to the August third substantial completion date. Now, the city of Riverton values the integrity of its bid process and the subsequent management of its awarded projects. As such, it is necessary to address the project's percentage of completed work and overages in contract time. In doing so, Public Works Department has collaborated with the city council, city staff members, Majors Equipment Incorporated, I M E, and Wendell Maka, Chair of Force. From this collaboration, several variables affecting the project were considered. Soon after the project's commencement, the city initiated some changes to its design scope of work, the largest of which was the exclusion of several sections of sidewalk originally called out to be replaced. These sections were removed because sidewalks are generally defined as the adjacent property owner's responsibility to maintain. As such, staff was directed to exclude them from the project. Furthermore, following the freeze thaw of winter, it was discovered that some sections of concrete designed to be removed, and more so maybe designated to be removed, were not in as critical condition as others on the same street, which had not been designated for removal. Therefore, some sections of concrete were exchanged for others that were deemed to be in a higher need of replacement. These changes were made in the spirit of Article nine four A of the general provisions, where minor variations in the project's work may be made without adjustment to the overall time or price of the contract. This is because the exchanged concrete was in close proximity to the designed locations and would be paid under the same unit price as those called out in the engineered plans. While the above mentioned changes were not anticipated by Majors Equipment Incorporated, they acted in good faith to accommodate the best interest of the city. Prior to beginning work, Majors Equipment Incorporated expressed concern that ninety calendar days may not be sufficient to complete the project's contracted amount of work, despite having signed a contract prescribing ninety calendar days. Expecting the work to be completed during the two thousand and fourteen summer/fall construction season, city staff responded that they would work with Majors Equipment Incorporated in good faith regarding the contract time. Ultimately, it is recognized by both the city and Majors Equipment Incorporated that each party overestimated the extent of the project and underestimated the time it would take to complete the work. To address the overage in contract time in relation to the percentage of work completed, it is proposed the city council approves a change order for the miscellaneous concrete repair project to decrease four hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-four cents of work from the project total and add fifty-eight days to the original contract time. The additional days appropriately address the weather delays and city-initiated changes the contractor experienced throughout the project. Attached to this report is an agreement signed by Majors Equipment and E R I Engineering agreeing to the terms of the proposed change order. Also attached is the detailed change order document. Pursuant to the proposed change order, the city and Majors Equipment Incorporated agree to delete from the project all work not completed by October fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen. As a side note, um, through the diligence of E R I and Majors Equipment, they have substantially completed to this date the work that, um, is relating to this change order. It is also agreed that all work completed for the project prior to the issuance of the change order will be subject to any and all contractual provisions, including warranty provisions. Majors Equipment Incorporated is currently only working on punch list items. Outstanding work deleted from the project will be addressed next construction season. Working in conjunction with force, the city will appropriately bid the remaining work in the future. Budget impacts. The project was originally bid and awarded at nine hundred and forty-four thousand and eighty-three dollars. After the application of the proposed change order, the total project contract price will be adjusted to four hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-six cents. May I state that that's nearly half a million dollars? It's a lot of work completed and a lot of benefit to our city. This amount will wholly compensate Majors Equipment Incorporated for the work they will have completed prior to the October fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen date. The above mentioned outstanding work to be completed next construction season will be advertised and bid per city policy. As such, prices will be subject to the blind bid process. Additional engineering costs may also be incurred as the city rebids this uncompleted and outstanding work. The current project's engineering costs for design were thirty-one thousand, seventy-five dollars and forty-two cents. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Kyle. Appreciate that oversight, and I, I share the comments regarding the one percent. Mr. Weaver and I worked very hard to get that passed, and, um, it's been a great blessing to our community. This little hiccup that we're having now is, um, I think of reflection of a large project, first time that we've gone through it and whatnot, so I hope we can, um, move forward in anticipation of getting a lot more work done next summer, because it's certainly needed, uh, as you go around town, where there's, um, cement that's coming apart all over the place, so, um, at any rate, um, the chair would entertain a motion regarding the, um, miscellaneous concrete repair change order.
Your Honor, just a point of clarification, uh, the, what was put in the packet, um, there was an updated one, and if you want me to read that, I could do that for number four as part of that agreement. I wanted to make sure that that, that was the one that was approved and not the one in the packet.
I thought perhaps we could have that during the discussion.
Okay, that's fine.
But however you want to do that, that's fine, Stephen. Is there a motion to approve this?
Is there a motion to approve the change, Your Honor?
Okay.
Second. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Uh, is there discussion at this time now? Would you like to?
Yes, Your Honor. Uh, number four was changed slightly. It was a little unclear to the contractor when we put that in there for what the unfinished portion would be. And so I wanted to read what we've added to it to clarify it for both sides. And I believe it's the intention both from this, for the city council and for Majors, and we've agreed to this language. So it says Majors, E R I, and the city agree that through the process of bidding and construction under this project, Majors and E R I may have gained information that would afford it an advantage when the uncompleted and deleted work is rebid. And therefore, as a matter of fairness to other bidders, Majors and E R I agree that they will not submit a bid on a future project where the work to be done under the future contract is made up solely of the unfinished work under the miscellaneous concrete repair contract. This clause shall not disqualify them from bidding if the future work is made up of totally new work or partially of unfinished work and partially new work not contained in the prior contract.
Okay. There's discussion?
Your Honor, I'll be abstaining from the vote.
Okay. Go ahead and call for the question then. All those in favor of the motion to approve the miscellaneous concrete repair change order, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye, the motion is approved. Okay, thank you, Stephen. Good job. Agenda item number eleven, final replat of lots, uh, two and seven, and Outlet A, City Subdivision. Community Development Director, report, please.
Honor. This is a replat of lots two and seven and Outlet A of the city subdivision, also known as the old hospital property. You are looking at it for the second time for a final replat. The Planning Commission reviewed the preliminary replat of this property on August twenty-first and the final replat on September eighteenth, and recommended approval for both. The city council approved the preliminary replat on September second of two thousand and fourteen. This is the property that we've pretty much discussed before. City council received and accepted an offer for the two remaining parcels of the city-owned property. And the purchaser, uh, developer plans to divide these two lots into a total of nine lots for single-family residences. Developer will be required to run the water and sewer lines in order to provide the... Developer will be required to run the water and sewer lines in order to provide these utilities to each lot. The residential A-zone will be maintained. Through discussions with the realtor, the owner, and City staff, it was decided that prior to closing, the City would replat these lots and the owner would be responsible for the cost. Since there are five lots on this subdivision, there are over five lots in this subdivision, a preliminary and a final plat are reviewed by both the Planning Commission and the City Council. There have not been many changes to the final replat from the preliminary replat. Lot lines have been adjusted to accommodate the developer's plans for construction. The entire length of Outlet A is included on this replat from 12th Street to 14th Street, which was suggested by the Planning Commission, and this was in order to dedicate all of Outlet A for public access utilities and drainage. And this little note has been added below the legend, and the title has changed to include Outlet A. We've discussed the other items about connecting to the developer's new water line, and that will be done at some point probably in the future depending on budget. We would also require of the purchaser that existing water lines or sewer lines that are still on the property be abandoned. There were no changes in the reviews of the preliminary plat that were sent to utility companies. Public Works will work with the developer regarding locations of existing water and sewer lines. Planning Commission did review the final replat on September 18 and recommended approval to the City Council with the changes that are now on the final plat that you have before you. The developer will pay for the cost of this replat. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Andy. The Chair would entertain a motion regarding the final replat of lots two and seven and Outlet A, City Subdivision.
Motion to approve the final replat?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second regarding the final replat. Is there discussion? Are we planning on hooking in that water line and sewer line anytime in the near future, or do we just have an easement to do that when we're ready to?
Your Honor, yes, we, at this point in time, we just have the easement to do that whenever the developer decides to develop that, and that's what we did add that note that Outlet A is basically for the public access and for utilities.
Okay, thank you. Is there other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion passes. Mayor votes aye. Okay, agenda item number 12, public hearing and first reading of ordinance number 14-008, Century Link Finance Agreement, franchise agreement. City Administrators, report please.
Yes, Your Honor, this is probably the first franchise agreement that I've ever seen that doesn't have an expiration date. This franchise agreement with Mountain State's Telegraph and Telephone, that's kind of a, that seems like it's really old. Company now Century Link was adopted on June 1, 1971. The agreement was structured so that there was no expiration date. It was in full force and effect until terminated by either party upon a 30-day written notice. We looked at this agreement and realized it was so old that we probably needed to update it and get it within the standards of our other franchise agreements, so we called up Century Link, and they were more than gracious in saying, yes, we should probably update this. And so, over the last couple months, we've been going back and forth reviewing this and making some negotiations to a new lease agreement or franchise agreement. So I'm just going to highlight a few of the major, I guess, highlights of the contract. The first one is the length of the lease. It's a 10-year with an automatic renewal for an additional 10 years with a four-month notice prior. And so that's pretty standard to our other franchise agreements. That gives us an opportunity to open it up if we need to. We just have to give a four-month notice before the end of that 10 years. Section four, there's currently a 1% franchise fee on gross revenues. This is the same rate it has been since 1971. I would mention that the City does have the option to increase that. We brought that up to them, but we didn't push that because really didn't know the direction of the Council on that, but the Council does have the option to raise that if you'd like. We are currently receiving about $1,000 to $1,100 per month for a total of approximately $13,000 per year, so it's not a lot in the grand scheme of things compared to a lot of our other franchise agreements. Payments shall be made quarterly within 30 days after the end of each quarter. Initially, it was 60 days, but when you actually look at how much you get, you don't actually get quarterly payments. We were only getting them twice a year, and so we were negotiating that to 30 days and they agreed to it. This is a non-exclusive franchise agreement, meaning that other companies can come in and supply that same type of service, so it's not exclusive. Our City Attorney reviewed the document, and he did add a couple sections regarding the governmental immunity. I'd just like to thank Brandon Porter. He's the Corporate Counsel of Century Link. We did it, I don't even think we actually had a face-to-face meeting. They were all done on, over the phone or through email, but the Council has a couple options. You can make some modifications if you don't feel like that's in line with what we need to do. We can increase the franchise fee to generate more money in ways that impact to the budget. First would be if we increased the franchise fee, that would bring in, let's say if we doubled that to 2%, that would bring in an additional $13,000 per year. And the second would be Century Link has been experiencing a decrease in gross revenues. They stated that only 23% of their lines are currently being used in Riverton, so their type of business seems to be going down, not up, and they're concerned about that. And obviously, they're not in favor of another increase of a franchise fee because that becomes a pass-through, and it just makes it look like it's more expensive than maybe it really is.
That's a direct tax on the citizens if it amounts to.
Right, exactly. So our recommendation would be that the Council adopt the first reading with Century Link. That's our recommendation.
Okay. And this will have two more readings before it's approved, so, okay. Okay, Chair would entertain a motion for the public hearing.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Is there discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Councilman Fabian?
My only question is, what other entities do we have franchise agreements with currently?
Oh, Your Honor, we got Source Gas, I keep saying Pacific Power, but it's really not, it's Rocky Mountain Power.
High Plains.
And High Plains and Charter.
Okay.
I believe that's all the ones. Am I missing one? I think that's it.
Thank you. Okay. We have a motion and a second regarding opening the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. We're now in a public hearing. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the Council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Is there anyone that would like to address the Council on this issue?
Seeing none, Your Honor, I'd make the motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved in second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, would the acting City Clerk please read ordinance number 14-008 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 14-008, an ordinance granting a franchise to Quest Corporation doing business as Century Link QC on behalf of itself and its operating affiliates to operate and maintain a telecommunications systems in the City of Riverton, Wyoming.
Okay, the Chair would entertain a motion for the consideration of ordinance number 14-008.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to accept the agreement, the ordinance 14-008.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Is there discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Fabian?
I guess my one and only concern is that at least one of the other businesses that we currently have a franchise agreement with delivers a very similar set of services, and I think that we might need, want to consider the fact that if we're not charging both of those businesses the same franchise fee as a matter of percentage, we may be creating a competitive advantage for one over the other in delivery of a similar service, and I guess that's my only pause.
Your Honor? Yes. There's, to my mind, there's three telephone companies presently in Riverton. We've got Wyoming.com that has a service, we have Bresnan that has a service, and we have Century Link. Are they all the same? I mean, in franchise fees?
Oh, Your Honor, well, we don't have a franchise agreement with Wyoming.com. We have one with, well, it's not Bresnan anymore, it's Charter.
Charter? Excuse me.
But it's all the same one, but no, those are all separate, so they're not all one.
Do we have franchise fees with the others?
We have franchise fees with Charter.
Okay, and what is that?
I believe that one is, for some reason, I'm thinking it's 6%, but that's, I'm not sure on that.
I think that's a valid point that you're bringing up, Councilman, and inasmuch as this is the first reading, I think we need to address that.
Yeah, I can bring that back.
And bring it back and clarify that. And where it's a direct pass-through, you know, on to the citizens, that certainly could affect a business. Give advantage there, and that's not what our intent is either.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Gordon?
Those also are not truly similar businesses, and so it's going to be really difficult to split that to just down to phone coverage from Charter, because Charter's also supplying internet and also supplying television feed, so that may be a difficult task. And although it's a good idea to look at that and see, we haven't changed the rate, and so, you know, I don't know that we've impacted anybody here. We just caught it back up and put new language in it to make it read as though it was a current document.
I think also the argument, if Century Link membership is going down and they have the same franchise fee that they had in place since 1971, I don't think it's an unfair advantage that's causing them to go down. Now, if they were being charged 6% and the other was being charged 1%, then you could make that argument, but at any rate, I think it's worth looking at and...
Yeah, and I can bring that back for the second reading. I mean, if you adopt this in the first reading, we can bring back the second, and if you feel that's...
Because we certainly want to treat, you know, all of the franchise holders fair and equitably, but it concerns me a lot where this is just a direct tax on our citizens. And so, at any rate, any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Mayor votes aye, motion passes. Agenda item number 13, permit parking or city-owned parking lot, on city-owned parking Police Chiefs, report please.
Mr. Mayor, I believe you'll recall at the last council meeting, there was discussion among the Council that there were some concerns about the long-term parking of commercial vehicles in the city-owned lot that's basically behind Kusels that's at Fremont and Broadway. So I put together in the packet for you, I won't bring all that up again, you have it for your reference, but the definition of commercial vehicle and a vehicle already exists in the statute, so I don't think there's any need for us to reinvent those. By adopting those two definitions into whatever regulations we decide to move forward with, I think that we can clearly cover legally the definition of any vehicle that belongs to a business, and that would include trailers. By including in your packet those full statutes for you to peruse if you wanted to do that. I also don't think that we need to do anything other than minute action in order to regulate that parking lot. There's already existing ordinances that allow you as the Council to regulate private property parking that's owned by the City throughout the City, and I also included that in your packet. One of the goals that the Council expressed three weeks ago was that they wanted to raise some money through this process to help with maintenance of that lot, and so the Public Works Director and his department were able to provide some generalized numbers of what it would cost to take care of some of those maintenance costs, and their numbers were about $93,000 at current cost to replace the blacktop and to re-stripe that lot, and that price would rise over $170,000 if the surrounding concrete, which would include the sidewalk and gutter, were included in that. The permit itself is pretty easy for us to produce and to provide to the public or to folks who'd like to buy one of those permits. The Administrative Services Department already issues permits for a number of other items, and I did include a mocked-up version of a permit in your packet for you to look at. We really would like to make sure that there is some easily enforced way of regulating that lot. If we make it too complicated, it's frankly not going to be easy to enforce, and so my recommendation to you is to use the hours of 0300 and 0600 each day, which is consistent with the regulated parking on Main Street, and simply post that lot as no commercial vehicle parking between those hours. That would effectively eliminate any long-term parking of commercial vehicles on that lot. There's some...
Do you mean unpermitted?
That's correct.
If they had, if they had the permit, they could park there between those hours.
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
So, yeah, that would regulate people who park there long-term in a commercial vehicle or trailer that did not have a permit would be able to be regulated fairly easily by any patrolling officer who drove through between those hours.
Correct.
There's some discussion in your packet about the, how much that permit should be. At the last council meeting, two different dollar amounts were posited by Council members, and those were either $25 or $75 annually. I've included in your packet what that would raise, and it typically is not even close to what it would cost to truly fix and maintain that lot, and so my recommendation to you is to find a dollar amount that you're all comfortable with, that kind of meets your needs, and we just recognize that that amount of money, based on the few number of vehicles that will actually seek a permit, would probably not raise enough money in any reasonable amount of time for us to use that just for maintenance, and so it certainly helped to offset some of the costs, but probably is going to be prohibitive to charge enough for a permit that would truly take care of the maintenance of that lot. We also recommend that there might be businesses that would only want to lease spaces in that lot for months at a time rather than years at a time, so we recommend adopting a fee that's somewhere in the range of $10 per month, allow people to get permits that might only last for two or three or six months or up to a year if they'd like to, and the permit itself can have the expiration date right on it. So what they're comfortable purchasing at any given time would be the length of their permit. $10 a month per vehicle is about $120, well, it is $120 annually. I don't think that's completely out of line. We charge $25 for a one-time noise permit, and so this obviously would get someone a parking space for an entire year for $120. We would need to pass an ordinance, however, to set the fee for the permit, so I feel pretty comfortable that the law currently allows you to regulate that lot just by minute action, but the adoption of a fee or a permit would have to be done by ordinance. And so at the bottom of that page, number three, I have some options that you could adopt those recommendations, as stated that we prohibit commercial parking without a permit from 3:00 AM to 6:00 AM, that we charge $10 per month per permit, and that we regulate those not by company but by specific vehicle. Again, that just aids in enforcement and makes sure that everybody is playing above board, and we would simply write the license plate of the vehicle for which the permit applies on the permit itself. That would be displayed in the vehicle. A patrolling officer would easily be able to see that that permit is still in time and is on the correct vehicle. But obviously, Council has wide discretion to change that to whatever your goals are and to regulate that lot as you see fit.
Okay, thank you, Chief. That's, you've done an outstanding job. I read through it, and I was very impressed with the suggestions that you've made. I think we all agree that whatever, if we decide to go that way, whatever the permit is, is not going to cover the cost of replacing the pavement or the striping or anything like that, and that's never been an issue for me personally. I know our building department, one estimate I remember was that it recoups about 40% of what it costs to operate it. So it's not something that we're going to be able to cover the, all of the actual... Be able to to cover the all of the actual expenses against that lot. But for me, it's a fairness issue for commercial vehicles to park in there for extended periods of time. I I think is uh an abuse of the citizens' assets and we're not doing our job if we don't make an effort to try to. Recoup a little um funding back from those individuals, so. Personally knowing how much parking is worth in our city, why um ten dollars a month seems to me like a heck of a deal, so. At any rate, um thank you. The chair would entertain a motion regarding the permit parking. For the city-owned parking lot that's been recommended.
Second.
Was there a second? Okay, thank you. Uh we have a a motion in a second. Is there a discussion? Councilman Canaan.
Sir, I I wasn't here at the last council meeting. I'll be honest with you. I I I've watched the video. I listened to the to the comments that were going on. I read through the minutes. I understand your comments about using it and I guess, but I'm still confused as to what. What the intent is to regulate that parking lot. You know, we talked about um the amount of money it would cost to restripe or repave it. But correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is that we currently don't maintain that lot. We don't plow it. We don't clean it or anything. Is that correct?
Your honor, we do a little bit um in ways of the weed control and picking up litter, but it's very basic. Um we have not plowed it because uh the type of equipment we have, especially with cars in there. We'd have to use either the one that Keith has that he uses for the parking lot or an or a backhoe, which would take some time to do. And the street sweeping, um you know, we could we could do that. Um and I I don't know if we've done that at all. Not to my knowledge. Okay.
I I know we do take care of the foliage around the perimeter of it um and whatnot, but um. At any rate.
So so I would assume that if we're going to start charging the fee for a vehicle to park there, we're now going to start maintaining that lot? Plowing it, cleaning it, that that type of a that type of issue?
I'm sorry, yes, Councilman.
That would you couldn't do that. You can't plow that when it's full of parking. Because half of it has senior citizens that live in the hotel there. So you'd only plow half and you'd only plow probably a third of it. Because the others have commercial vehicles that are parked there when you're going to be plowing it, which is at night or in the early morning.
So I'm gonna charge a fee to park there, but I'm not going to. Maintain the lot.
No, it's maintained.
Well, I mean, we don't plow it.
We don't plow it, but it's that that's not maintaining it. We have new stripes. We put new new stripes there last year. The asphalt's been renewed is since nineteen eighty, so it has been similarly repaired and maintained. But what you're saying is uh is that going to become a commercial venture for the city? And the answer is no.
Well, I guess my concern would be is if I put my if you if you were going to charge me a fee to park someplace, then I guess I would expect you to be able to. Plow it so I could quote, get a vehicle in and out.
And if I've got a commercial parking lot and this is what it costs, and if you want to park there, fine. And if you don't want to park there, that's your prerogative. Um I I I understand what you're saying, but I don't see these as 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 linked. The city hasn't been providing for that, uh and people have been using it. And I, once again, I see it as a fairness issue, uh an issue that this is a city asset that's owned by the citizens of Riverton. And we have commercial vehicles that are parking there for extended periods of time. And if I've got a lot and you want to park on my lot, you're welcome to do it, but this is what it's going to cost you. Now, for you to come and dictate to me how I take care of that lot, I'd go somewhere else and park. And that's the way that I look at it. Um so I I I don't see those two as linked. I I think that it would encourage us probably if we could see a revenue stream. Off of that lot to maybe do a better job at taking care of it. I'm not arguing that point and it probably needs it. But it's it's an asset that the city is um owned and and I just don't think we're being. Very responsible stewards of that asset by just um but once again, that's my personal. Any other comments?
Your honor.
Councilman Gard.
Oh, I just want to clarify one of the issues. The gentleman in the office and his organization are the only people that have have striped and maintained that lot. And we appreciate that the private, the business owners that have paid for that lot or paid that fee for that lot years ago. Have done that as a group, so. I think they've done a real nice job on that and um I do recall Mr. Gores and. And some of the seniors being here a year or two ago regarding the ice buildup and they are unable to use that lot because of that. They can't park. The few seniors that do have cars in that building cannot park there because of the safety issue. So that is, that would be a concern of mine. We would have to maintain it. We're going to charge. We have to maintain it, just like we asked the citizens to, you know, we asked them to maintain a lot of things, so. We have to do the same. It's uh. Needs to be done.
I I do know that the city did purchase a couple of signs that we put um indicating that it is public parking, so. Councilman Gard.
Your honor, the the problem that I see with it goes back way before that and that's why last meeting I asked who owned the property. And I think that's really the linchpin. We should have set up at that time uh like we'd do with. Lots of different organizations, a maintenance arrangement to take care of that and put put a group in charge of that or inside the city if the city. City was to um had a conversation with Mr. Kussel today and that's the only conversation I've had with anyone over the over that. And and what his comments were was that close to a million dollars were renewed. And the cost of the property and the improvements, he thinks is only six hundred thousand dollars. He wonders where the balance went. I don't know if any of those numbers are correct. But what happens to us always in ownership is maintenance. And if the city truly owns that property, whether you want to debate the fact that it it does not need repair today. There will be some time down the road that it needs repair. And these figures that Kyle throws out on top of the table, um really interesting, aren't they? Hundred and seventy thousand dollars if we had to replace that. And so let's just let the scenario run. What if we, when we do have to replace that parking lot? What how are we going to pay for it? Now, the parking fees are not even going to come close to it. And as Mr. Kussel points out, ten dollars a vehicle that he wants to park there per month is just an aggravation to him. It doesn't go, you know, and and let's be fair, where is it going to land in the city slots? Where where are we going to put that money? And so really, if we're if we're good stewards of our properties, we should have had this put in a in a maintenance program. And let's just for argument's sake, say we take the franchise fee from uh Century Link for the last thirty years. And put it in a fund to maintain this parking lot. We would have some money to do the work. And we wouldn't have to rely on citizens to buy their own paint and get out there and stripe their own parking lot. And so I I think it really does take a long-term, sit back and make an intelligent decisions on how we maintain city property. And and start to budget that and maybe we have to pray tell not fund other things. And fund our own properties because we are quick to point out how dilapidated properties look in our city. And yet we do nothing or very little, you know, it's. That back alley's been a problem for a long, long time. The drainage is really flat in there and I don't know that there's an answer to that. And it surely is not without cost. And so to make that safe and to make that an adequate adequate area to be used year-round is difficult. That alley has always been a difficult alley to maintain. It's on the north side of of everything and so it's ices up immediately when. A spoonful of water hits it. So I don't think these are things that we can solve and and yet I think there are things that we need to. Get together and maybe put a put somebody looking at this and finding out what other. Facilities that we have that have no funding mechanism whatsoever to maintain them. And there's a lot of them. There's not a few. There's a lot of them. And we need to turn these dollars that we have here back around to maintaining and beautifying what we already own. And all of us know that's probably more. You know, isn't that the old complaint about property tax? You never own your house? You think you get your house paid for and you still get a bill every year for your property taxes and you really don't own it? And so I I think that's where my question is, is not the revenue of, and I think Martin's letter to the council was a good one. He had real good points in there. It's it does not make sense to double tax these individuals just because they want to park downtown. That's what the purpose was for. We actually, that's the way they created it, was parking downtown. And over the last three weeks, along with we've been discussing, I've been watching, there's never, it's never full. So why are we trying to limit parking? And yet there is wise people in the community that say, how are you going to pay for that? And you and I, I think all of us here realize that when we do finally have to replace that, we'll do it with a mill levy. Special tax again. Um and if you're going to get caught in that zone, which many of us have been caught. It's going to be uncomfortable to pay for that and it is going to get paid for. It is going to be replaced someday. Maybe not in our terms, but it is going to be replaced someday. Somebody's going to be sitting here saying that parking lot's unsafe to use. And so what I would really like to see done is is some kind of organizational entity to take money out of the city budget. To maintain city property. And it and it really needs to be done on a timely ma- basis. You know, um this thirteen hundred dollars per year from from the franchise, maybe we could put all the franchise fees in a maintenance fund. That would that we could actually look at what maintenance has to be done on city-owned property. Maybe we have to cut back on on um other. Other organizations, but we really do need to. If we if we expect our own citizens to maintain their properties. And we talk about how the sidewalk is theirs and they need to pay for it if it cracks. Then we need to we need to set that example and and be out in front of that. I think there's good arguments. It's it's wonderful that a taxpayer is is taking his time and effort to to maintain what little maintenance has been done there. And in talking to Mr. Kussel, he's he's really disappointed over the fact that we're going to charge for something and then never never give a service. It's not going to add up fast enough to even buy the paint. And and there we are, once again, chasing the same dog around the tree. And so my proposal would not be to change this ordinance or change the parking, but to change this the the situation inside city council. That funds these different locations so that we have some money to maintain it. And we and we get it on at least a list that puts it out there in front of us and shows us what we do own and what maintenance is coming up on it. So that we can judiciously set money aside to pay for it because this parking lot is going to get replaced. Or maintain someday by it appears to be us, since we're the owners, the city of Riverton. And it's a hundred and seventy thousand dollars estimated today, which we don't have a thought of where it's coming from. Now, to go back to, do we want to, do we want to force parking? I think we probably don't have the votes here to to deny to do that. And I don't think it's going to amount to much, so I I just, the the comment that he gave to spread hate and contempt is exactly what we're doing. And so I think once again, we need to listen to the citizens of Riverton and quit pushing them down a road that that really isn't going to be productive. And and we need to get a port back or set up some kind of ability to fund these and maintain these. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Councilman Gard.
Your honor.
Yes, Councilman Fabio.
I have a couple of thoughts on this issue. Um and I guess from where I'm coming from, I I actually talked to. I think four different individuals who were part of the, or at least very closely related with the original um assessment. And two of them happen to have large lots that they personally own. Down very near that city parking lot that yet they paid toward the parking lot on. And um their feeling, one of which was Inverd Miller and I believe the other one, Eddie Martin. Both said that in, you know, in in their remembrance of what happened there, they. They felt like the purpose was for employees to be able to park during the business day. And for public parking and that it was really never intended for the commercial vehicles. And um a gentleman with Inverd Miller made the point that if. Every Inverd Miller vehicle that currently lives in a lot that they purchased, in addition to helping purchase the city lot. Lived in the city's lot, there would be no space left in the city's lot. And so I think that's where the fairness side of it comes in, you know, it's not. It's not personal vehicles that are really the issue. It's that one commercial entity. Buys a yard big enough to park their vehicles in and another commercial entity decides to squat on the city's parking. And that's really the frustration, I guess, that I heard from the people I spoke with. And I understand, you know, the the idea that there was an assessment made to put that parking lot there in the first place, but. The intent of the parking lot, I don't, based on all four of the people I talked to, it was never. For long-term commercial vehicle parking. It was a city parking lot for employees of businesses and for people shopping downtown. During the working day. And I think there's a real distinct difference between those two types of parking. And so I guess that's why. And I don't know, maybe the answer is that we, you know, I I really haven't heard enough outcry from the public. Toward me saying, wow, that's such a problem. Maybe the answer is to turn a blind eye until it is a problem, but. My gut tells me that eventually it's going to be a problem. So I guess that's where I'm coming from on that. The other thing I'd like to bring up is if in fact we decide to go this route. Perhaps we could specify certain parking spots for the purpose of that overnight. Commercial parking so that we did have an opportunity to get in there and maintain most of the parking lot. Put them all in one area so that we know here's where most of the vehicles are going to be that. We can't plow around and we can at least get some equipment in there and do what we need to do because right now. There's one here, one there everywhere and there's no rhyme nor reason to it, which is part of the problem why we can't maintain the lot even if we wanted to. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilman Christian.
I just have one question uh to the chief. Can these commercial vehicles, if we choose to? They they no longer can park. Can they park on the side streets? That's the only thing I'm worried about. Can at some point that happen?
Your honor, the short answer is yes. Uh any vehicle really can be parked on most streets that aren't posted otherwise for up to seventy-two hours at a time.
And that's the one thing about plowing. That was the one thing that there was, you know, people were saying, well, park on the side streets and then we do another ordinance and another and another and another. Again, I don't think it's, I've no outcry, no complaints the city has received about the parking lot, I I guess. I don't mean to say it's a.
Please address this. Yes.
Well, um. No, no complaints have come to the council at this time. I haven't heard about that other than the maintenance of the lot, so I don't mean to turn a blind eye to it, but. Lived here forty-something plus years and they've. plus years and they've always parked there. Uh, I guess it is a revenue stream, but, uh, I think a small one and I, I, we do discuss the, uh, another issue is the, uh, the chief and the officers having to manage that lot. Another duty. I mean, that money, will that suffice to, uh, cover their costs for parking or for monitoring parking? Just a couple of issues. Thank you.
Councilman Cannon, you had a comment?
Just again, two, two comments is that, one thing that I guess, but the ordinance in my mind doesn't address is what about a commercial vehicle that parks there overnight? Because the drivers, for example, Mr. Kussel's delivery guy from out of state that quote, doesn't want to drive in the middle of a blizzard. So he, he parks his, parks his semi there. How does he go about, I mean, do we, do, are we going to make him run down to city hall and buy a permit for, for a night to, uh, to get him through without getting his vehicle ticketed? I mean, I'll, I'll throw that out. But then the last thing I'll throw out, again, we, we talked about maintenance and stuff like that. Uh, and I just asked city staff today to throw out some quick, uh, maintenance yearly type stuff. Again, we're, we're talking about possibly parking them all in one area so that we can plow. Um, twenty vehicle permits, uh, would have to be two hundred and twenty-five dollars a year in order to cover just yearly maintenance of that lot. Uh, if you wanted to keep it at a hundred and twenty dollars, you'd have to find thirty-eight commercial vehicles, uh, to buy a yearly permit just to cover the yearly cost of plowing it, cleaning it, killing the weeds. And, and like Councilman Gard brought up, you're, you're going to spend that money every year taking care of it and, and still never be able to restripe it, repave it when the, when the time comes.
Okay. Councilman Larson, did you have?
Those are good, um, those are good statements. Unfortunately, the facts is not what we're addressing. We're addressing using city property for commercial parking. We're not talking about maintaining it. We're not doing anything. We're just trying to, first off, we own the property. Second thing, we need to receive something for compensation for commercial parking. Now, they can park anywhere they want. They can park anywhere they want. And in nineteen eighty, there wasn't the companies there. Wyoming.com was not there. Uh, the cable company was not there. They are now using that. And it's our responsibility to make sure that if they're going to park on the city, then they should pay something for that. Secondly, the complaints that I've got is, and I, and I've heard the name Kussel comes by, there is a garbage contained area that he continually fills with either boxes or washer and dryers that are used that are in the alley. Now, nobody in our area is allowed to do that, but we still allow that. So, and those complaints have come to my, uh, because I've spoken about it. And, uh, it's just, it's just poor business. It doesn't, it doesn't add to the beautification of our property when you've got a garbage dump in the middle of it and used equipment there. Now, uh, you know, I don't know who the warrant rider is or anything else, but they need to take care of that on a timely basis. Okay. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilman Larson. Any other comments?
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Smith.
Um, I guess listening to, you know, both sides of the argument, um, I just, I don't see that we have a problem with the lot right now. I don't see the added benefit of having permits that is going to cause our staff more trouble to issue and enforce them. Um, one time in ten years, I've not been able to find a parking spot down there and that was when the farmer's market was down there. And what a great thing that downtown was so full, you had to drive a little bit to find a parking spot. So, um, I don't think we ought to penalize the business owners. We've left it open for commercial and private parking for decades. Um, I don't think we have a problem. I don't think we ought to permit.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Fabian.
I think at this, at, at this point, I guess, from where I'm coming from, um, I would just put this out there. If you have a problem with the current way that the city parking lot is being handled, please let us, the council, know so that we can take a, another look at it. But I guess at this point, I really haven't, I've been the one who brought it up to anyone I've spoke with about it. And, you know, they may have an opinion, but they don't, I don't believe it would have ever been shared with me had I not asked. And so in the spirit of, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, I think I'm probably leaning away from this at this point.
Okay.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Gard.
My last bite at the apple.
Okay.
The, the problem remains that we have a lot of properties that we don't currently fund to maintain. And I think we need to, we need to take a look at it. If, if nothing else, we should have a list of all the properties that we own and what they, what they cost us annually in, in our mind. And, and until we do that, we, we really don't know what the maintenance cost of those items. And then we could even have the debate if we need to do more or less on those properties. But there are properties. And, and maybe where we went wrong was we accepted title to that property. And, and maybe what we should have done, and this is a good thing in the future and we're talking about it every, out on the, in the federal, maybe we shouldn't take title as a city of Riverton, uh, those properties. Maybe we should have put a, a foundation in front of that, that actually, if, if we did need more money, we, much like the senior endowment, that we could have put in front of that to maintain the property. And so I, I think it's an important decision that we really ought to not just, I don't think that the parking lot is a problem. There's plenty of parking spots there. But I think we ought to take a look at that because, um, how long is it going to be before we need to spend this hundred and seventy thousand dollars to fix our property? Especially if we maintain it as well as we've been doing in the last thirty years. So I think it needs to be on some line item of where we're going to get the money to take care of it, because, uh, parking lots do take maintenance. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Um, I'd just like to, I guess, close out the argument and take a bite at the apple as well. Um, and all of the folks that I've talked to, when I run into them at the coffee shop or wherever they're, they all, um, seem to feel, I don't know who Councilman Gard is talking to, that we should do the will of the public, because the public that I've spoken to said, have told me that they feel that, that the commercial vehicles that are parked down there should be paying something. Now, people don't, uh, you know, want to charge an arm and a leg or anything like that, but they do feel that they should be paying something. And they also seem to feel that, that, uh, Mr. Kussel uses the city parking lot for his personal loading and shipping area. And it's, it's just a fact. You go down there and take pictures and whatnot. Um, and I, I don't disagree that it's not a, um, it's, it's not a big issue. It's not a big problem. Um, but it is, or potentially could be, a small source of revenue to try to address some of these problems. And I don't disagree with what Councilman Gard is talking about. Perhaps if we had a little better vision, a little, uh, we could, uh, assign a franchise fee or something to it. But I have an idea, if you were to talk to Stephen and say, where is our franchise fees going now? I bet they've got a home in the budget somewhere. And you take and move them over to this parking lot, then wherever they're going now is going to be shortchanged. And all I'm suggesting is that this, well, it's a small revenue that would be coming in, and it is a small revenue stream. Um, you know, but at least it's, it is a revenue stream. It is taking a little bit out of the sting, um, that some folks feel that we're using a city parking lot for commercial vehicles that are left there for weeks on end. And that's kind of where it's at, but, uh, it appears that the, uh, the will of the council will be to, um, to not go that direction and I can certainly live with that, so.
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilman Christian.
I just want to say one of, in just a response, you know, Mr. Kussel's name keeps coming up and, and I just want to say, and I hope this isn't off point, but, you know, I'm glad that's his personal loading facility. I'm so happy that people are buying stuff in Riverton, Wyoming.
I agree.
I, I wish every piece of that alley and every alley was clogged up every day. Cause the one thing I've learned on city council, I preach this to everybody and I can't always convince a lot of people, but if any way possible, if you can buy your products in Riverton, Wyoming, hopefully downtown, thank God. I mean, yes, some of us have to go to a big outlet someplace because money is an object or, you know, it's, it's just you got to. But by God, if you can, if Mr. Kussel blocks that alley all day long and he's selling that stuff, by God, I'm so happy for him and anybody else that can do that, block those alleys any day. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Any other comments before we call for the question? Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the floor regarding the city-owned parking lot. Uh, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, the noes have it. The motion fails. Okay, bid awards, sanitation rollouts. Public Works Director, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. On August twelfth, two thousand fourteen, um, the city council, as you know, approved to change how municipal solid waste is collected in the city of Riverton. This change was motivated by an adjustment made by Fremont County Solid Waste disposal district to reduce their days of operation from seven to five days a week at the Riverton Vailler and Sandra landfill facilities. In response to this adjustment, the city council approved the recommendation from staff to replace the city's residential alley dumpster receptacles with individual rollout receptacles. As a result, the city advertised a bid, a public bid, to purchase ninety-five gallon automated rollout containers to replace the existing residential alley dumpsters. The advertisement period began September seventh, two thousand fourteen, and bids were opened September twenty-third, two thousand fourteen. There are approximately one thousand five hundred residential solid waste, um, accounts using alley dumpsters in the city of Riverton currently. The above-mentioned bid to purchase ninety-five gallon automated rollout containers was advertised for one thousand two hundred units with the option to increase or dec- decrease the order by twenty percent. The city of Riverton currently has a surplus of roughly five hundred forty-five gallon automated refuse containers rollouts. It is expected that a percentage of these surplus containers will be used to replace some of the residential alley dumpster accounts. Six bids were received and opened from five suppliers on September twenty-third, two thousand fourteen with the following results. Ameritech Equipment Company at the unit price of sixty-three dollars. Total price for the twelve hundred rollouts was seventy-five thousand six hundred. Toder LLC, fifty-seven dollars and sixteen cents at a unit price. Total price, sixty-eight thousand five hundred and ninety-two. Rayrig Pacific Company at fifty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents per unit price and seventy thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars for total price. Auto Environmental Systems LLC, um, they submitted two bids, um, for two different models that they are able to supply. The difference between the two, to, to add clarif- clarification, one has a locking lid, whereas the other does not. Um, for Auto, the Millennium MSD ninety-five M model, fifty-three dollars and forty-four cents at a total of sixty-four thousand one hundred and eighty, one hundred and twenty-eight, excuse me. The second, um, model submitted by Auto was the MSD ninety-five M Edge at a total price of fifty-four dollars, sixty-eight cents per unit price and sixty-five thousand six hundred and sixteen total price. Lastly, IPL Incorporated submitted a bid at sixty-eight dollars and eleven cents per unit price and eighty-one dollars, seven hundred and thirty-two per total price. The apparent low bid for the ninety-five gallon automated refuse container was Auto Environmental Systems LLC at the unit price of fifty-three dollars and forty-four cents. However, as staff reviewed each bid to assure that they were responsive, it was discovered that the apparent low bid was non-responsive to some of the bid specifications. In fact, each of the three apparent low bids was found to be non-responsive to certain bid specifications. There's a table referenced below in that bid package, or excuse me, I got bid on the mind, in the council package that you have all received. Um, for the benefit of the public listening, um, also, I'll, uh, read through some of these. Each of the bids submitted by Auto Environmental Systems were non-conforming the container wall thickness requirement of four point four four millimeters and container weight requirement of forty pounds. Toder LLC was the next apparent low bidder. However, their proposed container did not conform to the high-density polyethylene material requirement, nor the above-listed weight requirement. Following Toder, Rayrig Pacific Company was the next apparent low bidder. The container they submitted best conforms to the specifications in the advertised bid. Each of the apparent low bidders submitted receptacles with wheel widths outside of the specified one inch. Staff, um, submits that that probably is not the biggest of, of issues. In light of the above-listed non-conforming items, it is recommended that the city council award the ninety-five gallon automated refuse container bid to Rayrig Pacific Company at the unit price of fifty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents per container. That being said, there are some options that you have to consider. From the bid advertisement documents, there is, um, language written saying, "The city of Riverton reserves the right to evaluate variations from the specifications and award the bid that meets its needs at the least cost." Therefore, staff recommended the most black and white, um, bid proposal simply for purposes, um, of, of meeting the, the most requirements. That being said, as a city council, you do have the ability and the latitude to award, um, the low bid of Auto or either of their, um, receptacles they submitted, or Toder, if you feel necess- if you feel that, excuse me, those bids, uh, meet the city's needs at the lowest cost. When you look at some of the, uh, specifications wherein they fall outside of the bid advertisement, uh, the container wall thickness at four point four four millimeters, Auto came in at three point nine and three point eight. You're really looking at a difference of point five millimeters on wall thickness.
Point six four.
Point six four, thank you. Um, as far as weight goes, um, again, it was specified that forty pounds would be the, the specification. Auto's, um, receptacles came in at thirty-eight point six six pounds and thirty-six point six six pounds. Uh, Toder came in at thirty-five point two. Um, Rayrig came in at forty-one. The fortunate thing that I think, um, we have to our benefit is that we live in Wyoming, sometimes we suffer from high winds. And the wind requirement specified in our bid advertisement of thirty-five miles an hour were, um, met and exceeded by each of these bids, uh, by forty-seven, forty-three, forty-six, and forty-six point two five respectively. So again, you have some options if you do consider that, uh, you would like to go with the apparent low bid. As far as budget impact goes, uh, the city has currently budgeted eighty thousand to purchase rollout receptacles to replace residential alley dumpsters at the price of fifty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. And I do want to add that is including freight costs, that is a unit price delivered. The following budget impacts are expected. If the, uh, twelve hundred receptacles are ordered, the budget would be, excuse me, the impact would be seventy thousand six hundred and fifty-six. Um, if we go with the extreme of minus twenty percent from that twelve hundred, that would be nine hundred and sixty at fifty-six thousand five hundred and twenty-four and eighty cents. If we go with the maximum amount allowed in the bid, that would be one thousand four hundred and forty receptacles at the price of eighty-four thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven and twenty cents. Therefore, if we go- Therefore, if we go with the maximum amount, we will exceed that 80,000 budgeted. That being said, funds may be supplemented up to $10,000 from an existing budget line item for rollout containers set to be replaced. Therefore, again, the staff recommends that the city council approve and award the bid to Rayrig. However, if you feel otherwise, you may, you may exercise that judgment.
Okay, thank you. Chair would entertain a motion regarding the sanitation rollout bid.
Your honor, I'd make a motion to accept the Rayrig sanitation note, award.
Okay, is there a second?
Your honor, I would move that we accept the apparent low bid of the...
We've got a motion, are you seconding the motion?
I'm not seconding the motion.
Okay, apparently there's no second, so the motion will die due to lack of second.
I would make a motion to approve the apparent low bidder of Auto for the Millennium container this time.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the Auto Millennium, is that correct? For the unit price of 53.44, is that the one you're looking at?
Yes.
Second.
And we've got a motion, is there a discussion?
Your honor?
Yes.
In the, in the pre-meeting, I, we brought this up and it's true that there's no, there's no issue with our equipment using those containers, they're, they're adequate for what we need. And I guess for over $5 apiece, lower price for something that, we're talking about a half a millimeter of thickness and, and the wall and a weight of a couple of pounds, two and a half pounds difference in weight, and supposed wind resistance is actually higher than the apparent low bidder, I guess, I just feel like we're talking 1,200 containers as our estimate, that's $6,500 by going with that low bid. I guess, the only, my only other thought might be perhaps we should change the spec and rebid it, just to give that full opportunity to anyone. Most of these big manufacturers, I think they probably sent us what they make and I doubt we'll get a lot of different bids, but that's my only other thought, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'd just like to comment, I recall driving down Pershing and one of the citizens was there with his rollout and he was beating the sides of it because the garbage container truck had come and squished it. And so he was trying to get it back in shape so... And so, I'm not an engineer, we do have an engineer sitting in the audience, maybe more than that, I don't know, but I think when you're dealing with plastic like that, .64 of an inch on, may have a lot to do with the durability and the stability of the container. And so, I feel a little bit uncomfortable with us going, you know, for five buck difference. You may save $5, but I'm just worried that, you know, we'll have more people than, than one trying to straighten out their garbage containers because we decided to save five bucks. But, we have a motion and a second on the floor regarding that issue at this time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, mayor votes aye. Okay. Agenda item number 15 is the one we injected in, personal use airport hangar lease agreement. Mr. Butterfield, are you going to address that for us, please?
Yes, your honor, and I express my gratitude to the council for the late addition and do apologize for not adding this in the packet, not giving you enough forenotice to review this item. As a background, excuse me, current lease agreement requirements for airport hangars at, at our airport facility are universally applied to both commercial and personal use entities. As a result, individuals leasing airport hangars for personal or private use are required to comply with terms not entirely appropriate to the nature of their hangar use. This is specifically seen, excuse me, with liability coverage requirements for the city's current airport hangar lease agreement. Article 10 of this agreement reads, "Lessees shall obtain and keep in force throughout the term of this lease a commercial general liability policy of insurance with limits not less than," and listing those limits, "general aggregate limit, $500,000, products completed operations aggregate, $500,000, personal and/or advertising liability aggregate, $500,000, each occurrence limit, $500,000, higher damage limit, $50,000, medical expense limit, any one person, $5,000." Many of the personal use airport hanging, excuse me, hangar lessees cannot obtain the above-listed commercial general liability policy of insurance in order to comply with the city's current lease agreement. Not only are the above-listed limits cost prohibitive for personal use lessees, but two of the listed limits solely apply to commercial use operations. City staff from both the public works department and administrative services department is currently working to address the burden the lease agreement imposes on personal use hangar lessees. On September 19th, 2014, the airport board passed a motion recommending the city council suspend two requirements from lease agreements pertaining to personal private use airport hangars. This suspension will relieve personal use hangar lessees while city staff works to address the problem long-term. The policies proposed for suspension are products completed operations aggregate limit at $500,000 and personal and/or advertising liability limit at $500,000. There are no budget impacts at this time for this action. Pretty much, we have a number of residents who, who enjoy our airport, those facilities, who enjoy flying, and lease hangars for personal use, but have been burdened with trying to meet our current lease agreement requirements, again, for cost prohibitive reasons, and then also as a private individual, they really don't have advertising liability or other commercial-related liabilities. Therefore, we, following the airport board's motion, staff recommends the city council suspend these two items as we come up with a, a better long-term solution.
Thank you for that informative information regarding the airport. We've been going through a lot of ups and downs up there and this is just another glitch, but we do want to make it as user-friendly as possible for our general aviation people, and it's my understanding that this only applies to general aviation, it doesn't apply to the commercial side of it.
Your honor, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. The chair would entertain a motion regarding the hangar use lease agreement.
Your honor, I'd make the motion to accept the personal use of the, of air, use of airport hangars to change their lease agreement.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there a discussion?
I guess my only comments here would be, do we want to put a, a time limit on that suspension to give staff a time to create that new lease agreement for personal use without letting it just run indefinitely?
Your honor, I guess my only concern with the time, I mean, if we reached the end of that and we didn't have a solution and then you'd have to come back and extend that, I mean, obviously, we're going to work on this and get it done as quick as possible, but I, it's going to be suspended until we bring back lease agreements to amend those and then that will be taken off.
Your hon, your honor, this, at the airport meeting, we had probably three or four pilots, not all of them fell under this problem, but it's, it's a real simple, this is a, this is the correct fix. These, these guys aren't, they can't obtain it no matter what they're willing to pay, these two items. So, I think this amends it to what they can obtain and it keeps the product, keeps the hangar insured, keeps the product in the hangar, taken care of, people that are accessing the building, and, and this is typical of other airports. Ours, we just blanket passed a lease and it didn't, didn't cover the, the user, that's just a private user. And so, these do need to be removed, these two items, because they cannot obtain them at any price, because they don't have a business to justify the use of those items. And so, I think it's, I think it can go indefinitely if it needs to, but the reality of it, the amendment of the, of the lease, they're trying to get a lease out of Cody or somewhere else that, that reflects that, so I think it'll be taken care of in a timely manner. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Did we win?
Apparently not.
Okay.
It's talking to me.
We've got a motion and a second regarding this, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, mayor votes aye. Okay, and that finishes our agenda, I think, of items that we have to cover, council committee reports and council members roundtable. Councilman Gard, would you lead off?
Thank you, your honor. The airport board, we're just referring to it, it was nice to have those pilots in the room to help us make those decisions. Lots of times, we make decisions without any help, and so, to have them there and explain to us how difficult they were, the difficulty they're having in trying to obtain that insurance that just wasn't available, made it easy, an easy decision. Martin and I both attended the rec board meeting last night, it set a record, three or four minutes long. And so, that is the extended mine reports, thank you, your honor.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Christiansen?
Thank you, your honor. Just one thing, I just want to remind everybody that October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and thank you for letting me give that speech, your honor, that was nice of you to let me step in.
I appreciate your willingness to do it, thank you.
So, everybody, I'll give my little two cents here, just so everyone knows, three people, nationally, three people are killed every day with, over domestic violence. $4 billion is spent annually just in medical treatment from the result of domestic violence in our city, in one agency only. So far this year, there's been 65 incidents of domestic violence, and those are the only ones that have been reported, that they've come in and contacted this agency. The, the theme this year of this alliance, the Domestic Violence Alliance in Fremont County, is don't judge, educate. I do want people to know that any support for someone out there that you think might have this problem, just be there for them. We all know someone that's affected by this crime, so it, it happens daily in this community. It varies from verbal abuse to physical violence and the ultimate of, you know, they, their life is ended. It takes a person seven times going back and forth before they finally make that move to, to leave their abuser, so it's pretty amazing. The ladies I talked to and the different agencies were pretty informative. I do want everybody to know that they need to educate themselves about our local resources, every single, the police department here, they have, they have people that work directly with those folks, the sheriff's office, BIA, other, in this county, there is so much that's available to those people, I mean, just call any, any police department. So I guess my closing statement would, please support these agencies, get to know who they are, where they are, and support the law enforcement that does work with this directly every single day. So, these programs need to stay in place and we need to fund them and keep them going because it's, people are dying out there and we need to pay attention, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Canaan?
Sir, the Volunteers of America Leadership Council meeting will be tomorrow, but I'll remind everybody that their, their empty bowl event is going to be the 23rd of this month. Cost isn't bad at all, I think it's $10 a person for, go down there and sample some soup, some different kinds of, of bread. They're still looking for table sponsors, they're still looking for people to want to bring in soup for that event or, or bread for that event. So again, I'll, I'll put that pitch out, that that's coming up here shortly, and again, I think a very worthwhile type of, of event to raise some money for the, for the Volunteers of America and our, and our center of hope here in town.
Thank you. Councilman Fabian?
Thank you, mayor. I don't have any committee reports, I just wanted to extend my congratulations to Harley Spire, having been elected the homecoming queen. I had the pleasure of getting to know Harley prior to her accident and as, as many of you may know, she was, she suffered pretty severe spinal cord injuries as the result of an auto accident several months back, and she's doing very well and, and I just love to see the way our community has rallied around her and her family and, and she is truly a inspirational young lady and congratulations to her on, on winning the homecoming queen. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Larson?
Your honor, the only comment I have is the people on 16th Street seem to, at certain points, park a lot of vehicles on that and make it difficult for access to or from if there were emergency, and I'm wondering, trailers, boats, et cetera, what can be done about that? I mean, it's, it's interesting, you, you can play dodgeball, you can, if there are two vehicles coming, it's better that you go to the side and let him come through, that's how restricted it is, and it's not safe if, if there were a large snowstorm or an accident or some gas line rupture, that would be a worse place to be.
Do we have easements along there that, that would potentially widen that street?
Are you talking, your honor, on 16th Street or on the alley?
16th, 16th East.
16th Street.
East.
I know in my neighborhood, we've got a big setback in there and we could double the width of our street.
Oh, you mean the park strip in there?
Yes. Now, I know they don't have that down there, but I'm just wondering what the easement is, would that be a possibility to solve that problem?
Well, that, that's definitely one option we could look at to see what the right-of-way width of that road is, if it could be expanded.
But I, I do know we've got some really narrow streets in town and, but that would be a, a pretty serious solution, but anyway.
Thank you.
Chief, did you want to comment on that?
Your honor, not necessarily, and I, I can't say that, that's one of the things that we're trying to address right now in our increased attention to abandoned vehicles is to deal with some of these trailers and utility trailers and RVs that are parked on the street, but the law frankly is not very coherent as it relates to some of those vehicles, vehicles that look like they ought to be moved off the street are perfectly okay, and some other vehicles that, you know, are larger and, and potential a lot more expensive and have higher visibility are not okay to park on the street, and so we're just really trying to find a coherent way to fairly apply the law across the board and, and try to keep those, those streets as safe as possible. The fact that 16th East is just a narrow street and there's a lot of stuff parked on the street over there.
Your honor?
Yes, Councilman Fabian?
Chief, do you feel like the current ordinance is appropriate to make those areas safe enough for your department and other departments like yours to do what they need to do?
Your honor, I don't know if you guys have paid attention or not, or if council's paid attention, sorry to be so casual with it, we, we've placed a grid over the city and assigned officers to each of those grids in an effort to really work with the homeowners to see if we can get some good... to see if we can get some good voluntary compliance, get vehicles registered properly and, and work with them, particularly in choke points. I'd like to let that play out a little bit before we start making recommendations to change ordinances, just to see i-if people properly educated can help us with the problem as opposed to having to change the law. So, if you don't mind, I'd like to play that out a little bit, see how that works. And then, if, if there are problems that we can't fix within the law, then, then I'll bring those to you and ask for a change.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Have looked up on, at least the county's GIS service. I mean, there is a little bit of easement area, or right-of-way, I would think would be the better term than easement. However, it would cut in substantially into those residents' yards and we would have to acquire that. So, it might be a little...
If we already have the easement?
Well, I, I changed the word easement because I don't, I'm not sure if that's exactly the case just from the information I'm looking at, but
Okay.
there is probably a right-of-way. The aerial photo is a little bit off from the property line. However, my assessment is sidewalk area, et cetera. There's a right-of-way there. Whether we would want to take property to widen the road is something we'd have to look at.
I think it's worth looking at.
Your Honor?
Yes. Councilman Gard?
I was remiss in not thanking the chief and his, his officers for the hard work they're doing on those, those cars. I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Larson? Or I'm sorry, Councilman Larson is already done. Councilman Smith?
Your Honor?
Yes?
Just one item tonight. I did not make the Chamber of Commerce Board meeting last Thursday night, but you all probably received the email from the Chamber Director, Jim Davis, and I wanted to point that out for the viewing public, that the Chamber needs donations of candy for the upcoming Main Street Trick, Trick or Treat that's coming up in a few weeks. And any donations can be dropped off at the Chamber Office downtown at Main Street, so.
Thank you. City Administrators Report.
Yes, Your Honor. I would like to mention a little bit about the empty bowl. I know the police department is trying to sponsor a table and I know the city is trying to sponsor a table, not monies from the city, but people that work in the city. So, if you're still interested in contributing to that, let us know. We've had a few council members donate some money and staff, because we've got, the sponsorship, I believe, is five hundred dollars per table and so.
How close are you?
I think we're, we're around three hundred. Also wanted to do a little report on our trip to Cheyenne for the SLIB and SBLC meeting. The mayor and I and Alan Moore and Kevin, I, I botch his name every time.
Chris Chisnake.
Yeah, they're from Idea Inc. We went down there for a couple days, met with the top five elected officials, pleaded our case in front of them. And then we had the meeting and it was interesting, is to say the least. Our, our Wyoming Business Council grant was approved at that meeting. And so, that, it was approved by the Business Council, but then it has to be approved by SLIB. And so, that one was approved. So, we do have the money for that. The actual application for disposal of the three hundred and two acres, there was a lot of discussion, a lot of different concerns. We had the Modellers Park there and also the Honor Farm. In the end, they ended up tabling that to the December eleventh meeting. And in the meantime, they're asking us to have some consultations with Modellers and Honor Farm and see if we can work out some, some different, maybe agreements or middle grounds or, but the city was really pushing forward with that three oh-two. We believe that's what we need for the future so we don't have to keep coming back. It has been a lengthy process. Idea started about fifteen months ago. They've spent a considerable amount of money and we've spent a lot of time between the two agencies working on this and we don't want to keep doing that. But it was, I thought it was a productive meeting, particularly meeting with them individually because then you could answer their questions instead of trying to do that in a large meeting. Also, on the four-two-two East Main, we should have the DEQ coming to give us our certificate for the soils on November fourth. There's still some issue with the groundwater, but it's their understanding that we can move forward on any of the plans that we have to, whatever the plan is for the council with that property, that we don't have to stop now and wait for that. As those levels get to a, a certain level of, I think, five parts per billion, then they'll issue us a certificate of completion and then that will be clear on that property. Our work session next week will be fiscal health report and then we're going to have a presentation by our police department dispatchers, learn about dispatching. And then, Christian was able to round up our franchise free on Bresnan or Charter and that is five percent. So, you can, we can discuss that at our next meeting for the second reading. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Stephen. I'd like to echo Stephen's comments regarding the SLIB meeting. It was interesting. And I don't know what else to say. They live in a whole different world down there. And the politics and the vibes that you get from, I mean, it, it really was. It was, it was different. And I, I, I felt pretty good about the way we're, we're headed. We did get the funding at this point in time so that we can make the opening bid on the property through Idea Incorporated. And so, that was a good step. But I was really disappointed that we discussed and everything regarding the need for the three hundred and two acres. The Honor Farm is interested in giving us sixty, sixty to seventy acres, I think, is what they're looking at. And the Modellers Park doesn't want to do anything. They, they want it just to be right where it's at. And I can certainly understand that. It, it bothers me, you know, that we've had such a good and close relationship with the Modellers Park over the years and they've built a wonderful facility out there. But I, I think that when you look at the potential long-term growth for the city, that we just can't have our community be divided and potentially kill that opportunity for our community to gain these three hundred and two acres into the public sector where it can be developed. It was really interesting when, I forget if it was Cynthia Cloud or, or Cindy Hill, I don't remember which one of them asked the question, that, well, the ten acres that Walmart bought, that sold for five hundred thousand dollars. And the, that was only ten acres. And here you're talking about three hundred and two acres and it only appraises at one point six. Now, what's the difference? And, and Alan Moore got up and very succinctly said, well, the original appraisal on that property, that ten acres, I think he said, was a hundred and forty-five thousand. And the initial bid was three hundred thousand and Walmart came back with five hundred thousand. So, that's what we're hoping will happen with this three hundred and two acres, that the appraisal is one point six, but we're hoping someone will come in at three million and then someone else will come in at five to seven million. Now, whether or not that will happen, I have no way of knowing. But potentially, that amount of money could go into the Department of Corrections Fund to use as they see fit to make the Honor Farm whole. And so, I think it's a win-win all around. But if, if we get to chewing on each other too bad and kill the deal, it's, it's, it's not going to be, be productive for our community, for us to take that approach. So, at any rate, I was optimistic. I'm hopeful that when we meet December eleventh, that they will be willing to bite the bullet and put it on the market and see where it goes. So, but it was a very interesting meeting, so. Other than that, I don't have any comments. I agree that the Volunteers of America fundraiser is, my wife has been working on that very diligently. That's all I've heard for the last month, is the fundraising that's going on there. And she is now on a trip to Niagara Falls, so I've got a little respite. But at any rate, it looks like it's going to be a good, a good fundraiser. So, with that, we don't have an executive session, thank goodness. I'm glad that we dodged that bullet. And enjoyed the conversation this evening and it's always interesting to see how the, the council weighs different things. And I, I enjoy that discussion. So, the Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.